All right, it is six o'clock on Monday, November thirteenth. I'm calling to order the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. We're meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library on Main Street on a snowy Monday night. All five members are in person and we are on Zoom and we are being recorded for live airing on local access as well as rebroadcasting on local access, YouTube and other social media outlets. If we can head into the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can go into approval of the Treasury Warrant 24-10 and Payroll 24-PW-10.
Make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant 24-10 and Payroll 24-PW-10.
Is there a second? Second, Austin, is there anything of significance? Nope, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I recuse myself from, pardon me, cable activities.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I excluding Safe Place.
Whitman, I, thank you. We have a whole host of meeting minutes. I think most, I think we were all in attendance for them. If we can do them, maybe hold the exec and do that one separate, but then do the October twenty-sixth. Thank you. All right, so let's do them separately. Sorry, guys. So is there the, we have the October twenty-sixth meeting that was Select Board and FinCom. And I think all of us were present. This was for the warrant setting.
So we'll do the twenty-sixth, thirtieth and sixth, and then go back to the session?
Let's do them all individually, the twenty-sixth, because I think Paul was not in attendance on the thirtieth and then.
I make a motion to approve meeting minutes from October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do the motion, is there a second?
Second, a motion.
Motion and second, any comments, questions, edits? Thanks, Tamika. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I.
Make a motion to accept meeting minutes, October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
And this was our regular scheduled meeting and I think Paul was not in attendance on this one. Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, edits? I usually let Tamika figure it out. I surprise you when you ask. All right, hearing none, Harry, roll call.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
I think, sorry, I think you should abstain.
I should excuse myself, you're right.
Sorry.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I, thank you.
Make a motion to accept meeting minutes from November sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
And this was our bylaw review, I think we were all present. So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, questions, comments, edits? Hearing none, Harry, roll call.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I.
I make a motion to accept meeting minutes from Executive Session on October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
I think not to be released at this time.
Okay, not, not to be released.
This is still in the works, right?
Not to be released at this time.
So we have a motion to approve and not release at this time, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, questions, comments, concerns? If there is any, we'll hold them to go into Executive Session, but if everybody's okay with them, then we'll call. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Mattson, I.
Ledger, I.
Galvin, I.
Whitman, I, thank you, Jen and Tamika for those, because it's a lot. Moving into the comments and announcements, I just wanted to thank the American Legion Post and the Veterans Agent as well as Liam Deirdren and his family for the wonderful Veterans Day ceremony that they held on Saturday afternoon. It was really well attended, I think rough estimates were about three hu- or two hundred people, I think. So it was really well attended, a lot of really positive feedback. I thi- think it went off really, really well. So I appreciate everyone who came out to support our veterans, I appreciate all the veterans and their families. We have two veterans on the board here, so thank you, Tom, and thank you, Harry, and thank your families as well, because it's a big commitment, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a special Fall Town Meeting on this Thursday. The meeting starts at seven o'clock at Glenwood Elementary School on Glenwood Road. It's, I think, a fairly short meeting, I think there's sixteen-ish warrant articles. So hopefully we can all come out and spare an hour or so of our time. And Thanksgiving is coming up, so I want to wish everyone a thanks, a happy Thanksgiving. And just remind that we have a lot of farmers in town, farms in town, in local businesses that are more than happy and able to help provide for your Thanksgiving feasts. So please support local if at all possible. Reach out to them. Any, oh, if anyone has any pictures from Veterans Day, can you please pass them, send them along to Town Administrator Tamika Executive Office, if you don't mind? I didn't get any and I don't know if anybody got any, so it would be great if we could get a collection, if anybody has any to pass along.
Is there any way, Paul, is there any way, they were videotaping that, is there any way to stop the video and take a picture?
It can be done.
If we need something.
If you're looking for some particular, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be done.
Good question. Anybody have any other updates? Hearing none, we'll move into public comment. It's a great turnout today. Karen, do you have anything? No, thank you. All right, you guys are here not for public comments.
I believe we were going to fall under the Town Administrator update.
All right, so we will move then into the Town Administrator update.
Good evening, thank you, members of the board, happy beginning of the snow season, unfortunately. I just also want to echo the comments. I had the pleasure of attending the Veterans Day Ceremony. I think I mentioned in my remarks that I'm always surprised at how Rutland turns out to events and I think it was a special and fitting tribute to the veterans and demonstration of the support that the community has for all community events, but especially veterans. So thank you again to those who attended the ceremony. Also just want to roll right into it, as the police chief mentioned, we, as I mentioned in our last update, we were fortunate to promote Detective Dan Collins to Lieutenant. So just wanted to turn it over to the chief real quick to introduce formally our new Police Lieutenant to the board and to the community. Chief.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me tonight. This has been a, a process that's been, that's been taking years. Even prior to me being Police Chief, we were trying to get a Lieutenant's position, the intern Police Chief. Before the last chief and I tried to get the Lieutenant's position. You know, as the town continues to grow, the department continues to grow and our responsibilities and the workload continues to grow. And I'd like to thank the town, the Select Board, the Finance Committee for collectively supporting us in this endeavor. And it finally came to fruition, we were able to post the, post the position a while back. We had a really good response to the posting. We had twenty-six applicants from, mostly from Massachusetts, some from out of state. Every, almost every one of which has advanced degrees. And I'm happy to report that Lieutenant Dan Collins, previously Detective Dan Collins, he put in for it and he came out on top. He went through, we hired a company, MRI, it's the same company that did the selection process for the Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, same company that did my chief's process when I got promoted. So, you know, we trust them to do good work. So out of the twenty-six, they, they screened everybody, they conducted initial candidate interviews over the phone and then they did a full-day assessment center where they invited the top five finalists to the assessment center to, to take all their tests. And I am happy to report that not only did Dan come out in the top three, he was a top-scoring candidate out of everybody. So really proud of him, really happy to have him. And I'll give you a little background on Dan, he's got about thirteen years' experience in law enforcement, starting in New Hampshire where he was a dispatcher and a police officer. From there, he went on to a local campus police department where he served as a sergeant for several years, sexual assault investigator. He also works for the state as an emergency vehicle driving instructor, so he teaches all Police Academy recruits how to drive. And he came to Rutland PD in two thousand eighteen and has had an outstanding service record ever since. He's, I was going through his file today and he's received commendations and life-saving awards from all three stages of his career, in New Hampshire, at the campus and at Rutland PD. So we're, like I said, we're happy to have him and he's going to do great things for us. It's really going to increase the capacity of the police department and how much work we can get done and the quality of it. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to the new Lieutenant, Dan Collins.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief, as well for your work and everything. So welcome again and into the new role, I suppose. And thank you, and thank you again, I want to echo Chief Monaco's words to the community for supporting this position through the override, FinCom as well as the Select Board, it was the previous iteration of us, but it was a, all hands on deck to get this moving forward and kind of bring, bring a lot of our departments to a better staffing situation. So thank you for the perseverance and, and thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you.
You're going to miss that motorcycle, Dan. Lieutenant, I get to use that first, so I could think. How do you feel about the new job, are you excited about it? I mean, is it, I mean, you've been in this department a long time, you've seen anything, you've been a detective, do you see this as a nice challenge for you?
Yeah, it's different just because it's more of the administrator side of the house. Like I have to learn to do things like write grants, like I don't know how to do that yet. But that's kind of exciting to me because I'm always excited to learn new things. So I want to not just like be okay at writing grants, I want to be the best grant writer that the town has ever had.
Sure you will.
So, you know, but for me, it's a little different, I'm used to being out in the street, I'm used to working detective-type cases, but now it also provides me an opportunity that we're going to promote a new detective. And I'm going to be in charge of that unit and I'm going to get to teach that person as much as I know and probably learn some stuff myself along the way.
Well, we're looking for good things from you.
Thank you, sir.
That's for sure. You got a great guy there, Chief.
Thank you. If I could just add, we, we're going to do a formal swearing-in ceremony, probably when the new Deputy Fire Chief comes on board. So we can hit them both at the same time, have a nice little get-together and we'll make sure everybody gets an invitation, it'd be nice to have you.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, welcome, thank you.
And Lieutenant impressed me very much in terms of, we talked about, you know, obviously, what do you think about the position? And, and obviously growing and developing this new position for the department. One of the things that I was impressed with was his, was his knowledge of the laws and especially some of the initiatives that I think the policing profession is looking towards, like certification, accreditation. He's citing policies like forbidden without cheating, which I thought was impressive. And, you know, I think he's a, a great asset to especially the administrative side of our public safety departments. And I think he'll be a great First Lieutenant and just want to, again, congratulate you and thank you for applying and look forward to working with you in this new role.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for him, can move on?
I'm good.
Thank you both, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will, see you Thursday.
Just want to continue, so just on the personnel updates, I mentioned in the last that the interviews for the Treasure Collector position will begin shortly, actually starting this week. We were fortunate to have at least a handful of qualified applicants, some other, maybe not so qualified applicants, but those who, who I think match what we're looking for in terms of the Treasure Collector position will be starting those interviews, I believe, tomorrow. And just to, want to speak just quickly, so we are, as I mentioned in, in the timeline for that, we are in line with that. We're also, we have a committee of staff members who are reviewing and interviewing the applicants and will provide a recommendation after their review and interviews shortly thereafter. And just want to always mention the ongoing recruitments, we are still looking for a DPW mechanic and a general laborer. We're looking for two public safety dispatchers for regional dispatch and also I think we're still looking for a firefighter, paramedic. Chief, could correct me on that?
We should be interviewing the next week or two.
News directly from the fire department. Thank you, Chief.
Excuse me, Chief, will he be as good as Mark?
Could be better.
Could be better, thanks.
He's still here, right?
Yeah, no, I'm the winner.
Oh, sorry, Austin, for the DPW mechanic and laborer, I know we talked before about kind of the, the challenges. Have there been any, has there been any interest?
In mechanic, lots of interest, but one of the, so with our laborers, we could be a little bit more flexible.
Yep.
Because we, as, as I think the community knows and the board certainly knows, there's certain licensing requirements for our laborers, but especially our mechanic. With our laborers, we can a little, be a little bit more flexible, we can put them in a smaller truck that doesn't require a CDL. There's some things that they can't do, but with a mechanic, virtually everything they work on, they can't even drive it around the yard without the licensing. So those aren't, we, we can't really be flexible on that one for the mechanic's position. So that one is incredibly challenging and we're thinking of ways that we can increase the marketing and promotion of this to some sort of outside, outside-of-the-box venues to market this. But we're getting a lot of people that, you know, certainly have a lot of experience on smaller vehicles, you know, personal vehicles, but certainly not heavy-duty equipment that is necessary for this department.
Thank you, and one question for the, the public safety dispatchers. It seems like, you know, we kind of cyclically go through the, the openings on dispatch and I know we've kind of tried to have a concerted effort to, to make it a little bit less of a stepping stone, but I don't know that we're completely there yet, do you have a sense as to, to the?
I don't, it's, I, it's a tough profession to not only get into, there's a lot of training that's involved. This is also a, you know, a little bit more challenging environment because it is dispatching for five different communities. While there is some, you know, centralization in how things are toned out, it's still five separate communities, so it is a challenge. I think we're, we're looking on ways to, you know, be a little bit more, not flexible, but accommodating to the dispatchers in terms of scheduling and also, you know, just making sure that our training. So we actually have acquired a new training software, so we're really boosting up the training for especially new dispatchers coming on to the department, but also consistent monitoring of our existing dispatchers and supervisors to make sure that they're on top of their game. But this isn't just a Rutland problem. If you go on to, you know, MMA or any other sources for public safety postings, everyone always is looking for especially dispatchers. So something definitely an industry-wide issue that we're dealing with on that one, too.
Thank you.
So what would you say is the number one problem, Austin, that holds anybody back from wanting to do that?
Number one, well, there's, there's a lot of challenges. Certainly there's certifications and requirements that you need. One of the things that I think we've noticed is, especially when you're dispatching for five towns, the ability to multitask is a strong skill that is necessary. Where you're dealing with not only one call, many calls, where you only have two or three on duty at a time. If one community gets busy and then another just has a handful of calls and you don't have very strong multitasking skills, that is a challenge that, that we have. You know, but certainly there's, you know, things that we've noticed just in terms of response to certain specific types of calls that, you know, I think demonstrate the need to increase our training. And that's why we acquired this new training software, because we can actually see the data for different types of calls and see how each individual dispatcher and supervisor is responding to those. So that's been a great, great asset to the department. And we can also demonstrate that to the communities as well. So when they're asking about a certain specific incident, we obviously have everything recorded and, and a record of it. But we can also demonstrate now that we have the data on the training to show how dispatchers have reacted to that as well.
Do you think there'll be an impact to be able to hire better if and when we get our new regional center?
I think it's certainly attractive to have a new, new building or an updated building. I don't think it'll necessarily change the challenge of the profession. You know, certainly everyone wants to show up to a brand-new building. But again, I think we're going to always have the challenge of, you know, it's, it's a tough job. And I think there's other thing, there's certainly other things that we can certainly look at to make the job a little bit better for each and every dispatcher, so.
To the chair, would it be possible, I mean, I know money and staffing is always an issue, but to double up the staffing or to, I know it's a small area they work in, but what is it, two, two per shift usually or?
Three during the day.
Three during the day?
Yep.
I mean, would it help to add a fourth, is that something that would take some of the pressure off of them? They can kind of split the towns, I, I don't know. I've never worked this pitch, I don't know, but I can imagine it gets busy.
Yeah, so I mean, not only other staffing costs associated with that and we have to, you know, make sure obviously that the communities are, are, you know, kind of buying into that. But, you know, certainly the cost of capital equipment would be substantial. I don't believe we have four consoles in the center right now.
I'm not sure four can fit in, in there.
Probably not, yeah.
I think four can, we just don't have, we don't have the equipment.
Yeah, okay.
So there's, so certainly if, if that were something the town would be interested, or all the towns would be interested in, we'd need to have a, a plan and possibly pursue a grant opportunity for the equipment. Certainly, I think if we, I think one of the goals of the center is to continue expanding and providing, you know, central mass dispatch, we'd have to get there at some point, but obviously we have space needs and then equipment and staffing that would come with that, too. But just on, on that as well, I think the, the center has, has started holding again, I think they were paused during COVID operational meetings with each of the police chiefs, fire chiefs, and then also the town administrators from each community just to get an update on the operations of the department, talking about grants, capital projects, just so we're all on the same page. And I think it's actually required in the intermunicipal agreement to keep that dialogue going. And I think they've been successful for the, the first several meetings that we've had so far. Any questions on personnel? Just a couple of quick updates on some projects. First, I want to talk about one thing that's not on here, I've been mentioning over the past few updates. Tamika's been doing a great job on the website project, it's looking very good. I think we're still looking to, to go live over the next couple of weeks, rutlandma.gov. You'll see a, obviously a new website, but also look into streamline and have a lot of information available online for people. So whether it's public records, financial documents, everything that you can possibly think of, we're hoping to have on the website. So just want to give a shout-out to Tamika, she's spent a lot of time, I think she's actually having fun doing it.
She really is.
Which is interesting, she's done, I think there's like three days worth of like all-day trainings that she and some other members of the staff did. So I just want to give some kudos to her and thank her for her work on that.
Thank you, I think the residents are going to love it, awesome.
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just working in software and knowing when new software goes live, there's always going to be something that happens. Is there a way that we can post with whatever email or press to the residents, just who to contact if they have questions on finding something or something that goes wrong or anything?
Yeah, we have to, we can, we can do that.
Whether it's just a, an email, send an email here or whatever, just.
To be honest, I think they're going to have, it's going to be ten times easier for them to find things on this website than it ever was on our old one. But certainly if, you know, they have a difficult time, we have all contact information for every department and Board and Commission is all uniform now, very easy to access, clickable. So, you know, we can certainly, when we put that announcement out to everybody, they can contact our office and we'll take care of it for them, thank you.
Here's a great point, though, we should, there's a forums feature, we should make sure that when you press submit, it actually goes somewhere. Which actually, I think she's been testing. There's like a report-a-pot-hole kind of feature and I think she did one and it didn't work, so we're definitely doing some QA-QI testing.
Yeah, there's some kinks that we're working on, because we want to make sure we make the best first impression possible when we go to the public. And so that's why we wanted to make sure, typically you, you go live two weeks after your training, which would have been this Thursday. But Austin and I agreed that we're just not there yet and there's still some internal training for our staff because we want them to feel empowered and comfortable to be able to manage their own pages. So we just want to make sure we get it right before we put it out there so that folks really are impressed with it and, and enjoy it. Thank you. Thank you, yeah.
Austin, in the past, we have tried to get a community bus for our town and others. Does that grant cover just our town? Or do we have the access to go to other towns, pick up senior citizens and that stuff?
So let me get to that update, yes, so I just.
Well, I mean, if you're going to cover it later, that's okay.
Absolutely, yeah, so just, Watch Houston Street Project Hatch Company, I believe, completed the paving of that project, milling and paving on eleven-seven, so that closes out the, the trench repair project. Just a reminder, those, that project was paid from the state's Winter Recovery Assistance Program funds, essentially an extension of Chapter Ninety funds.
I thought, I, so do they, I thought that they were going to pave down farther, uh, to like.
No, so the, the goal was to go as, essentially the scope was go as far as possible.
Yep.
With what we had with, I think it was around forty-seven thousand remaining for paving, they could only go, you know, a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
I think obviously with changing costs of asphalt and milling, that changed things. But the, the project was essentially built out as far as possible and I think that's only as far as they could go, so. But just again, want to thank Mastop, but also there was a change in the legislature. I think at the end of the fiscal year to allow for communities to actually expend those funds. As you recall, there was a requirement to spend it by June thirtieth. That wasn't possible for lots of communities, so after some feedback, they extended that and actually gave the, the money to all municipalities before the end of the fiscal year for us to be able to expend that, so. So here, just the, I want to just quickly talk about that grant. I had mentioned that we had a grant pending from the Department of Transportation Community Transit Grant Program. I'm proud to say that Director Nichols has received a seventy-five thousand dollar grant from that program for costs associated with the expanded transportation. You'll recall, we received donated bus from the Worcester Regional Transit Authority. The remaining piece was, was this grant to pay for driver salaries, bus maintenance, fuel, other costs associated with it. So to answer your question, it's for Rutland residents to be able to get around not only Rutland, but the neighboring communities. It's one of the gaps that every community faces is access to transportation for medical appointments, food security, things like that. So yes, it'll be for Rutland residents, the program will be managed through the Council on Aging. So you'll reserve your ride through the Council on Aging and their outreach efforts. And then it'll essentially be an extension of our, of our program with expanded hours and opportunities. Right now, if you were to ask, hey, can I go to the Fourth of July events? Elder Bus doesn't do that, we, we own the bus, we pay the driver, we can, you know, do weekend shuttles, we can do special events, things like that. So this expands opportunities, especially for seniors, but because it's a, it's a town bus, we can use it for non-senior-related activities as well.
And we already have a driver for it?
We do. With all the, which was another thing, too. He was a, actually a retired driver from Elder Bus, so he's familiar with Rutland, familiar with the region. And he, at first was going to volunteer his time, but I think he was willing to volunteer a little bit more time when he found out he was, maybe it wasn't going to be a volunteer opportunity. I just want to thank Director Nichols for her work on that and our partners at Mastop for their support in this grant as well.
I think that's huge, I know it's been a huge goal kind of for the Council on Aging and Director Nichols for years. And so this is a, a great, first, it's a huge first-step initiative. And, you know, to Harry's point, if there's any availability to expand, by all means, I think that there's definitely the, the need and the desire, but this is phenomenal, so.
Good start, yeah.
I was going to ask for the grant, how long is that expected to last meeting? It's, if it's covering driver salary?
So the grants usually are for, it's usually an eighteen-month grant.
Okay.
And it's interesting, they, they follow sort of halves of each fiscal year, so it'll be for the remaining of fiscal year, twenty-four. And almost the full fiscal year twenty five. Uh, they're technically federal funds, um, so we still, you know, we don't have the money yet, we have to wait, I think, until around January to get the, the grant contracts and. To be able to have the authority to, to spend it, so it's still another. If we want to use the grant funds, we still have another couple of months to be able to utilize those, so. But I think over the next few months, what. Um, what Nancy will be doing is, is building kind of the infrastructure of the program and then working to promote it and market it to the community as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there a way to, I'm sure the. We're going to need to try to hit a lot of different avenues to get the, the word out, because the, some of the population that uses it may not necessarily be. Directly online a lot, and also some of the supports of people that need it might be online, so how to best manage. The, the.
So I think she has a list already. I think she's done some pre-grant outreach, just to let people know that, one, we have the van. Um, and you know, there's a very strong chance that we're going to get the grant anyways. Um, so I, I think she has a list of folks who, and through uh, also her outreach coordinator's efforts, a list of folks who I think. Will definitely be interested in utilizing the program. One of the challenges I know from a previous community is those buses fill up very quickly when they realize that it's there, so that's something also we need to. Um, manage long term is, you know, there's software that can assist with that to make sure that everyone has equitable access um, to the service, so. Obviously, it's a pilot program, it's a nu- new thing for Rutland. Um, so excited to get it started, but certainly it's going to take some, some work to, to maintain and make sure that. Um, you know, it's operating effectively for people, so.
No, it's awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put my CPI, CIPC hat on now.
Sure.
From a maintenance standpoint, are we gonna be having uh, DPW do the bus maintenance work?
Yes.
And as far as the pool, it'll be using fuel, it'll be using town fuel, so we're not going outside and paying top?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And um, and that was also built in, so over the next eighteen months, those costs associated with maintenance, whether it's tires, battery, brakes. Um, fuel, obviously, that's built into the grant, at least for the next um, eighteen months or so, so.
So it won't be coming out of quote DPW, it'll be a transfer from?
Correct, yeah, it'll be, yeah, offset by the grant. Um, that's all I have for project updates. I did ask the chair if, if we could address. Item five D for goals and objectives. That's okay with the rest of the board? Uh, so as the board is aware, obviously, we adopted them, um, the board established a set of um. Goals in August for twenty four. Um, there's a lot of goals here. Um, obviously, there's three overarching categories, investment in capital, improvement in staff morale and modernizing town government. There's a lot of goals and short and long term outcomes, so what I've done uh, on the slides are just sort of updates on each overarching goal. And certainly if there's quite specific questions to each goal or some of the outcomes, I can certainly hone in on those, but what I can say from, from the. Start is a lot of these goals you'll see are ongoing. Um, some were related to personnel that needed to be hired, so whether it's HR, our town planner. Some of these are, you know, just getting started, some of these have been ongoing um, since the establishment of these goals, so I will just. Try to quickly roll through and certainly please stop me um, if you'd like, so. Um, first thing for investment in capital is, is just a plan for the remaining ARPA and town meeting article funds. As you know, uh, last month at your ten sixteen meeting, I just kind of presented an overall year to date of uh, ARPA funds, some of the projects. Um, we're still doing an analysis of some of the projects to see where they are in terms of a status on, you know, specific projects. Um, so when we make a recommendation and a comprehensive analysis to this board. You'll have hopefully all the questions that you may have answered in the form of a report, so that'll be for a future uh, meeting and discussion. The same thing um, applies for the town meeting warrant articles as well. Any questions? The formation of a town facility working group, um, as you know, we have a lot uh, of capital needs across all of our buildings. We've not scheduled this project yet. Uh, candidly, I want to get an initial sort of list of requests from. Uh, our town departments for capital planning needs. Certainly, obviously, we have the facility study that was done several years ago. Planning on getting this uh, process started, especially after we have our first capital plan set from CIPC. Um, I would imagine over the next couple of months, we'll have a formation of a working group to kind of get the work done, establish a scope for the group, a timeline, deliverables, things like that. Allocating budgetary funds for capital facilities and equipment, that's specifically uh, related to the FY twenty five budget, so. Um, hoping, we do a little bit of already in terms of our public safety departments for ongoing leasing, but. There's really no built in capital projects, smaller capital projects into the operating budget. You'll recall, one of the changes to CIPC was the dollar threshold from ten to twenty five thousand with the, you know. Kind of the explanation that anything less than twenty five thousand should probably be built into your annual maintenance in your budget. Um, so we'll certainly be looking to include some sort of funds um, in the FY twenty five budget for each department. Any questions on capital? Uh, staff morale, um, professional development was uh. Think an overarching goal for a lot of these subgoals as well. Um, professional development is obviously how we continue to expand the organization and the personnel that are associated with it. As I mentioned in the last goal update, we're still working on the FY twenty five uh, budget prep. Uh, there's also some outside grant opportunities that we've identified, especially through um, our insurance carrier, Maya. There's some wellness grants that I think we can take advantage of, um, for professional development opportunities for town staff.
Um, since, you know, we were talking about like the DPW, having trouble finding qualified candidates for that. Is this something where, again, during all of our budget discussions, where we could say. We'll set aside however much money it costs to get that CDL license, whatever the training is. To hire the right candidate that has all the other qualifications, is that something that could potentially go under this? Goal if it's budgeted or whatever?
Certainly something we're considering. Um, we do have obviously some collective bargaining implications on that.
Okay.
For, you know, certain departments that have certification requirements.
Okay.
But I can say that um, when town administrators or the HR folks are, are talking to each other, that is one thing that. I think is across the entire Commonwealth. We were all talking about the licensing requirements, especially for CDLs. How can we be competitive? Um, and certainly a lot of communities are turning to that, allocating a certain, you know, pool of money for assistance with that. Um, so certainly something I think we can talk about in terms of the budget.
Thank you.
Um, we also want to highlight the impact of employees, positive impact. Um, we're doing, I think, some of it through some of our social media and our events work. But the new HR coordinator, Allison Mitchell, is also tasked with kind of developing some employee appreciation opportunities. I see some communities that do a really great job. They have like a employee wellness committee that essentially they come up with. Fun, interesting things for employees to do, um, just to, you know, kind of show that the town cares about them and appreciates their work. And their impact they have on day to day administration, so. Um, Allison will certainly be, she's got a lot of work on the HR front. And I think she's uh, has already some great ideas that we'll look to, to roll out at the staff level. Uh, we also had mentioned the need to kind of take a look and develop uh, personnel policies. We have some personnel policies, there's definitely a need to expand those. We actually have a draft set of personnel policies that uh, we are seeking. Department review uh, stage, uh, with a hope to present something to the select board. If not before the end of the calendar year, likely at the beginning of the new calendar year for the board to consider for personnel policies. Same thing for the next goal, implement HR policies. Um, again, ongoing, looking comprehensively at benefits. And just overall, everything related to personnel. Uh, something I thought was a, a cool idea, uh, was an employee of the year award. Um, talked informally with some community organizations for kind of the initial startup costs. Um, I have informally secured uh, some funds from a community organization. Um, once I get the check, I'll call it formal. Um, but essentially the costs associated with procuring a plaque and some of the, I guess, the initial startup cost, very similar to the Moses. Uh, how award plaque that we have. Uh, something I'd like to introduce to the community and to the members of the staff to, you know, highlight the efforts of some employees of the year. Um, the work, I have some sort of a draft process for. How awardees or how nom- people, uh, employees can be nominated and then the selection process. Um, ideally, this process is um. Completed in advance of our annual town meeting and inviting those employees to annual town meeting, not only to be recognized by their. Uh, peers in front of town meeting, but also the attendees of town meeting as well. I think it's a good practice and also having their name on a plaque in a town building, recognizing their effort, I think is a, a great thing for them.
There's a question on that. Um, is the nomination and or s- submission process go planning to be in-house? Within the town only, or can, is there a place where residents could? I had a really great experience with so and so and really wanted to.
So I didn't think of the, kind of outside of, of the organization, I was considering. Um, nominated by their peers, but also boards and commission members. Obviously, we have some boards and commissions that are supported by staff, so having the ability for members of the boards uh, to be able to nominate those. Uh, certainly, I think, I think that's a good idea, something that, as we're developing that process, that may be something that we can build into the process too.
Just because I know so many of the residents, I mean, a lot of people here, you know, everybody's very familiar and helpful and that, there's always good feedback coming from everybody, so I just. Even if it's not necessarily part of the nomination process, just a way to collect some of that feedback from the residents to, to help with that.
What if maybe we um, and we have like a reporter concern option on the website, what if we have a, give a compliment? On the website, and it could just be maybe some unsolicited good feedback to.
Exactly, that you could file away with all those staff and that even, you know, we've been talking about, you know. The HR side, performance evaluations, all that can be, you know, part of that as well and just.
Yeah, one thing is, I think especially on the public safety side.
Yeah.
They document everything, um, especially the, you know, not only the, not so positive, but especially the positive. Um, notes from members of the community. I know with the new training software for the dispatch, they have this thing called like Hi-Fi.
Yeah.
Um, and they can send a high five to, you know, dispatchers. Um, if you follow our dispatch center on social media. They've done a great job of kind of commending some of the dispatchers who have done a great job responding to multiple calls or severe, things like that, so. Certainly, I think having a holistic view of the feedback of, you know, that members of the community have on our employees, I think should also be considered, so.
It makes a commu- I'd probably just, it makes a community feel like they're more involved too. When the, when the community can say, great job, it, it makes you feel like you're.
Yeah.
You're part of the team, so to speak, you know, and you have a voice and, you know. Because they don't see the dispatches.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
I was just gonna say, I feel like sometimes even the, the public facing employees are sometimes different than the, the. Staff facing employees, and so sometimes it's just a different perspective also, so. Um, another consideration in addition, or somehow could be like a um. Employee of the quarter or something, uh, at, we at work always have like different departments have like a employee of the quarter or whatever, and it's. Nominations based on your interactions or whatever, um.
And it doesn't have to be a plaque, it's just saying, thank you, congratulations, you know, yeah.
No, no, it's just great.
Our, our company does, they call it high fives. All of our customers can submit their, you know, for whoever it is and provide their comments to, you know, whatever they. Want to say, and it gets posted monthly.
Yeah.
For, on our company internet, so everybody can read it and see all the good comments. It, it goes a lot for.
Yeah.
Morale.
Yeah.
You get that stuff.
It does.
It does help.
I was watching a, it wasn't Howard Center, it was one of the age towns, Hopkinton maybe, and it was interesting, they, they did it at town meeting, that's kind of where I got the idea from, and. They gave one to um, dispatcher, so they did a, a kind of a general government, and then they did public safety. The general, uh, the public safety was like a dispatcher and the general government was a DPW like truck driver. And it was amazing, at town meeting, he's in a suit and he was like beaming. Um, in front of town meeting, I thought that was special, and I think that it would mean a lot to the employees.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yep.
But I do like also being able to provide feedback. Through the website or something, and then either, you know, we read, Austin reads periodically at a meeting, or it. Gets incorporated at a department head meeting or so, you know, just some of the feedback.
And the new website, you could do a lot with it, so I, I'm really excited for what we can do with it.
Sorry, Tamika, we're adding to your list.
I love it, I, you know, I don't know if I should be ashamed, like, like I'm totally negative, but that's fine.
She told me she's going to go home and work on the website.
I did, I did, I came on the page, like I just have found it.
But it'll look great, she's, she's doing a great job. Um, next was uh, modernizing town government. Um, exploring regionalization opportunities with communities and statewide agencies. I can say I've had. Uh, town administrators from uh, various communities reach out for kind of very informal preliminary, hey, would you be interested? Um, and recognizing that this is a goal, I haven't said no to anything yet, obviously. Some of these are related to whether it's public safety or financial services, um, some a little bit more out of the box. Uh, with like some recreational opportunities to partner with. Um, so certainly, uh, you know, having any discussion, especially with, with peers in the industry. As they get to a, kind of a more serious level, obviously we'll engage the board for your interest and see if there's a real partnership opportunity there, but. Definitely looking at any opportunity, especially as the state is providing lots of incentives um, for regionalization opportunities. And I think it's a model that all of us will have to take more seriously down the road. Uh, long term financial planning model, uh, we actually have a draft five year forecast under review by the finance department. Uh, the goal was to have it presented at today's meeting. Um, with some vacations, um, we're planning to present it at your next select board meeting, which I know is a busy one. Um, but would like to present this to the select board and then the finance committee at their next meeting. Um, for kind of some high level considerations of our revenues and expenditures over the next several years. Um, and long term, once we kind of have that five year set, expanding that out to a kind of a ten year projection. Um, especially as we have a ten year capital plan, uh, something to consider as we take a look at the financial health of the community, so. Uh, look forward to that, present to that your next meeting. Um, just formalizing our budget process, uh, as was mentioned over the past several meetings, uh, we. Are looking to kind of formalize that process for town departments and boards and commissions. Uh, it's also been subject um, to some of the bylaw reviews and discussions that have taken place. Uh, we did send out uh, budget instructions uh, several weeks ago at this point. We're also actively developing what I think will be our first kind of public budget book. Um, to be presented to boards and commissions in the community. Uh, that'll also be presented um, sometime next month as well, uh, when the preliminary budget is presented to departments. Uh, budget requests are due from departments on the twenty seventh. In the next several days after that, we'll be doing um, budget reviews uh, with each of the departments to talk about their request and formalize that. Um, before we present that to uh, the boards and finance committee as well. Any questions on that?
What? From a CIPC perspective, what, and since Karen's here, she can maybe answer. What is the finance committee looking at from capital stuff going out over the five years? Not this year, but the following five years that would help them, if it would? Are we only looking at expenses and revenue? Or are we looking at a capital expenditure going out over five years to fit into the model? Because that would also help me understand how to frame that going forward.
Yeah, so, well, I think part of that was to the finance committee, so I'll just answer on the town side. Some information that would be presented and then obviously it'll turn over to our finance committee member in the audience, but. Uh, one of the things that you'll notice in the budget book, which kind of is in addition to, I think, the report that's presented by CIPC is looking at. Our level of debt service over the next several years. Obviously, what we can accommodate in and outside the levy, measuring that against the capital needs, but also, you know, sometimes with capital projects is. What you have for available resources and some of the projects, how they fit in. Um, sometimes obviously the, the bigger things you can't do right now, but you can do a lot of the smaller projects. Um, so I'm looking to include any metric available from the town's perspective that we can inform people. And ideally, it's, it's a. Tamika's gonna hate me, because the printer will be very busy. Um, but it will be a comprehensive budget book that has our financial indicators, especially level of debt service. Um, how much borrowing, um, we can accommodate, what potential projects with that borrowing, so. You know, when you're a finance committee member, select board member, just general member of town meeting, you can, one of the first pages you'll see is the. Overarching long term financial forecast. You'll see the budget, you'll see the indicators, and then at the back, you'll see all the support with the, you know, the capital plan, things like that, so. You'll see the budget, you'll see the indicators, and then at the back you'll see all the support with the, you know, the capital plan, things like that, so. It's an extensive document, but you can really point, just in one document, all the information ideally you need to make an informed decision at town meeting. Or at your board level, um from what we should be looking at from a budget perspective, so I don't know, Karen, if you have anything on your committees?
Um, I'm here as a taxpayer, not as a member of the finance committee.
Well, I just didn't know if you had any feedback to CIPC, if you will, in past history of what it would help, cause we've always done.
Helps us having money.
Report.
What helps us having money, Harry, that's the big thing, if we have money, we wanna spend it. But when we don't have money, CIPC unfortunately falls off, it's saving people or putting stuff. And unfortunately, over my time in the finance committee, that's exactly what it's done. Uh, I mean, we've gotten the budget, we've gotten your CIPC book every year, we look at it, but if we don't have funds, we can't spend it.
I I'm not, I'm looking at not so much this year, but five years down the road to help you factor in, like, we got a fire truck. Is that gonna be next year or the year after that, where does it fit into things?
I don't know how the finance committee's gonna wanna look at that, I know how I would look at it, but I would look at it from an accounting standpoint.
Alright, uh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, for something big, sorry, um, for something big like a fire truck, um, some of it is timing and opportunity. Seth, he's great at this, he said, hey, um, you know, town of so-and-so just um just canceled their order, there's a new price for the ladder. About a million dollars cheaper, what can we do? Like, I don't know, we're still working through the process, Seth, um chief, um, so. But also, as I think you mentioned, um, we really need to look at our long-term debt service and see, obviously recognizing that there's. You know, probably going to various. You know, obviously, I think with um increased enrollment of the schools, what's that going to look like in terms of the facilities? Um, so we need to, obviously, working with our partners at each of the school districts, um, school buildings are very expensive, just like fire trucks are very expensive. Or town buildings are very expensive, so big things like that will have to borrow, so we really need to pay attention to our debt service budget and what we can accommodate.
That's what I'm kind of getting at is, when we put together our stuff, looking at, and we do a lot of the financial analysis too, we look at debt service, we look at. Tax, uh, the cap, you know, that we're doing, how does all, where do we, when do we recommend this stuff? That's part of the big problem, so if there was any advice on that, that you or Karen could give me, okay?
Yeah, essentially, we're expanding on a lot of the work that you already already do, or including that in kind of the beginning of the book. So when people get to the um, you know, two million dollar ladder trucker, I know it's a little cheaper now possibly. You know, they really have a, an informed opinion, hopefully, um before they look at those, so.
Uh, I think if I may, I think one of the things is that we as a town need to be better about is recognizing that these things need to happen. And I think what we're at right now is it's been decades of no, very little maintenance, very little upkeep, very little. Because there hasn't been money and no one's wanted to have the conversations about, we need the money to keep this building going or this truck going or whatever. And now everything, we've hit that kind of twenty-to-thirty-year time point where a lot of things are beyond repair. Or at a much, at the need of a much more significant repair than what it would have been had there been some sort of routine maintenance.
And I guess, and again, to Karen's comment, there was no money there, but. To say it was a little frustrating for the CIPC to be going over fifteen, twenty million every year and submit a hundred thousand or fifty thousand for what we do was very frustrating. So that's why I'm trying to look at, okay, if we need this big, if we're gonna buy a dump truck for six hundred thousand dollars, when do we do it? When does it fit in? Because we have a lot of those expenses out there, and I think we can afford them, but they have to be fit into a certain place.
Developing a consistent communication strategy for all town departments, I've mentioned obviously at the beginning of the meeting that. Staff are working on a new website, this is part of the thirty thousand dollar community compact grant that we received. Um, not only for development of the website, but also the second phase is to kind of develop a strategy to utilize all the tools that we have, like the new website, like social media. And other venues and opportunities um to be able to communicate uh with the public effectively, uh so that is ongoing as well.
Austin, one thing I think I have recently heard that kind of, I think kind of falls into this is um. Reviewing and streamlining charges, not necessarily for town departments, but more so on the boards and commission side, but somewhat department and the. The staff roles and responsibilities, um because I hear a lot that, well, this group's doing this and this group's doing this. And it's really the same, but it's different, and what's, you know, who who owns it, who doesn't, or whatever. So I think that that's for us, I know we kind of have talked about through the bylaw stuff, looking at charges. Um, and roles and responsibilities, but I think that that's something that kind of, to help improve communication as far as who's responsible for for what.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely agree though, that that, I think that's definitely part of the overarching bylaws and and obviously the last goal is related to a charter, setting the structure. Uh, but that's something certainly that we've noticed in modifying the boards and commissions pages on on the new town website. Are there charges associated with some of these boards and commissions, are there terms, some of the things that, as we're cleaning up information, realizing that there's some information that's missing. So I hope for some guidance on the board in the future, how to address that and to formalize those relationships with each um board and commission. A really cool concept, Citizens Academy, um, this is, you know, some communities across the Commonwealth and actually across the country are doing. It's like an eight-week course, one night a week, you go to the library, you go to the fire station, and you talk with the department heads about the services that are provided. Uh, and at the end, you kind of graduate, uh in our conversations with the town of Hubbardston, uh they actually expressed an interest in doing a partnership for this program. Uh, so the library director, uh Carrie Remington, and um Rutland resident slash Hubbardston town clerk. Candace Livingston will be coordinating a partnership for this program, um and they'll, I think they're actually working on the details of that program and getting that rolled out. Um shortly.
So are we, we are moving forward with that then?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Developing a kind of a marketing strategy for economic development purposes related to all of the uh town on property, you'll recall. Um, we also um engaged Clark University Small Business Development Center, um I think to accomplish this goal as well, but. Our new town planner, uh John Travernow, has um also started some of that work with the planning board, working on the master plan. And other related boards and commissions to perform this analysis and will work closely with those boards, commissions and Clark to uh to get this project up and running as well.
I'd like to make a comment, at our last meeting, there was a discussion of overlap or uncertainty between EDC and RDIC. In what we're doing here, will that clean that up? Cause I'm concerned that we're not moving forward here with this stuff, cause there's a. Big divide, it seems like.
So I don't know if that was a part of the scope, I think I kind of took this this goal and and shared that with the planner and shared that with with Clark and saying. We've got a lot of town property that has a lot of potential. I think that's something that may have to be cleaned up, again, as kind of was mentioned about the the charges for each of the boards and commissions. I think that that's something probably at the board level you'll want to address and work through with each of the boards. Um, because ultimately from a staff perspective, especially if we're supporting those boards, um we also. Need to know the direction and the authority for each of the boards related to this effort, but this project is, you know, kind of specifically related to. Marketing for economic development purposes, um they'll certainly interface and interact with those boards and commissions, but. You know, kind of the level of involvement or what the authority of each board, I would hope that kind of you guys, from the leadership perspective, address that.
That's specifically one of the charges things that I just mentioned, that we had talked, that had come out of the bylaw that need to be looked at, and I know next meeting is quite heavy. Agenda-wise already, but it's definitely one of the the top things kind of looking forward within the next few months that.
Yeah, I I think Tom did a nice job of explaining and voicing his concern over that stuff at the last meeting. And I guess when I hear that we have a committee in town that is charged with promoting. And then to find out that they've put it on the back burner for two years is kind of, kind of unsettling for me. So we have to do something that gets that cleared up so everybody can move forward.
Yeah.
So, if that's gonna be on the agenda soon, great.
Uh, you may recall you've been looking at bylaws.
Really?
Uh, so wanna obviously give kudos to you, they're long, interesting discussions, but I think um. You're kind of demonstrating to the community that you have a commitment to modernizing town governments, establishing a structure. Um, and with obviously, as you know, the hope to present these um existing amended and any new proposed bylaws to town meeting in February. And with that, I think that would spark an opportunity to to establish further discussions about the town charter, which is obviously one of your last goals, maybe one of the most important goals. Um, to further establish that structure and some of the procedures associated with it. Uh, so that's what I have for updates on each of the goals, happy, obviously we had some discussion, but if you have any comments, suggestions, or. Things that you'd like me to work a little bit harder on, I'll be taking feedback ahead.
Question. Currently, we're updating the bylaws, so we have the bylaw subcommittee that's helping us out, when we go to a charter, who helps us out there?
So there's a couple of different um processes that the town could take on that, there's. Kind of um home rule petitions with charter language to establish a charter, that's one, that's one way. Um, you can establish a charter commission, which I believe ends up going to the ballot at some point, both involve the ballot, but there's. Different processes for establishing a charter that are rooted in mass general law, um, there's. Strengths and weaknesses to each of those paths that the community may choose to to follow. Um, I know, I think the uh, you know, the city of Gardner just amended their charter, and I believe they went with the home rule petition route. Um, they were also weighing the commission versus the home rule petition route, and they 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 opted for the uh, the liar, so.
Few years ago, town meeting appropriated a sum of money to work with a firm to do this, there's a few firms that do it. Um, that work with communities to to establish, create charters, um and so there's money that's been hanging out. And um. To to utilize, and it's it's a multi-year process, no matter which way, no matter which way you go with it. Um, it's, I think generally, what did they say, like eighteen months to two years generally, depending on how much.
So, over multiple boards then?
Yeah, but oftentimes it's a, I mean. If it's a committee that goes to home rule petition, if I remember correctly, cause it's been a few years. That's a committee that's generally seated by by the board, and then they work generally with the firm to help figure out. You know, and do public information sessions to really get buy-in, and then it goes to town meeting and and everything. There's another way that I think you can create an elected. Charter commission, um, and then that's just the elected commission does their work and it goes that way. Um, and I think they have provided, in the past, we had information on kind of both, I think a majority of town communities in Massachusetts. Go the home rule petition route, um but there are a few that have done the commission, the elected commission route, um so, yeah.
Which brings me, I guess, to a follow-up question, I understand the bylaws, going through it so much. And how that frames the governance for the town. I'm not sure I understand the um charter in terms of where it looks like it. It's a step above a bylaws for the town, is it more defined? What does a charter do for the town that this already, that what we have now doesn't?
It's like your constitution, you think about, you know, articles one, two, and three, you know, the different branches of government. The bylaws currently don't speak to other elected boards and commissions and the processes for selecting those, electing those, uh typically charters do that. Um, so it's a, you know, um, obviously higher level and kind of speaks to the processes and and structures involved for each, especially of each branches of. The local government, um and then the bylaws would then kind of refine some of those processes and and fill in, and then obviously at the lower level, it's it's policies and procedures. If you kind of think about our our state, federal constitutions and the laws and policies and procedures associated with that, it's the same. You know, kind of detail, if you will, at the local level.
Much more detailed.
Depends, there's some very strong charters that have a lot of information and very thorough, and there's some not so stronger detail and thorough. Which is where you get into charter revisions, so, um, town of Hubbardston went through it, I think. Ten years ago, um, I think they have a very thorough charter that really kind of explains the differences between positions. Elected boards and commissions, appointed boards and commissions, and then the bylaws, I think, do a good job of filling in the gaps if there is any.
Alright, thank you.
And there's, I don't believe there's any population threshold, town of Hubbardston's four thousand something people, and they have a charter. Tamika did remind me that this, I think, is the last board meeting before Thanksgiving, so I go back to the first slide for a reason. This isn't a local turkey, but I put a turkey on the screen. So I just also wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and just, if we're talking about being grateful and thankful, I. Just wanna thank the board and the community for being so welcoming, um and having me here, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, one more quick comment, I don't have any, thank you for the updates on all this, I don't have any questions on that, but just in the spirit of transparency for the public. Is there a way that we can update the link we have on the website to provide the most recent updates of progress?
Yeah, I can put those slides on online.
If, I know people can come and watch the meeting, but if they're anything like me, I prefer to go just directly and read and find an update for what I'm looking for, so if there's a way we can do that.
Uh, if I might, I would like to commend Austin for doing. A very thorough job of looking at the monies that are available between, particularly ARPA. So we don't jump to the gun and just start spending the money, and then also the other buybacks, is what I call it, from the other money that's already been allocated by the town. In terms of really getting a good handle and a good focus on what monies the select board has available to work with. And then coordinating it with the finance committee, so I do wanna commend him on that, I think he's doing a great job that way, absolutely.
We're thankful to have you here. It's like we should be thankful for Austin.
Thank you, Austin. Um, moving into new and special business, we have a uh EV charging stations on Maple Ave, the annexed building in the library. Austin, I'll let you take this, I think it's a grant opportunity.
Yep, so um this is something that the previous uh DPW director, I think initially started, um, I think when we were kind of talking about green communities opportunities. The discussion resulted in, hey, do you have any interest um in taking advantage of some grant opportunities and and um utility incentives to install. Um, public access charging stations, um, so I'll turn it over to Tamika, because she's kind of taken the lead on this, but this is. A request um to leverage um almost a hundred thousand dollars in funding or eighty-something, I'm not good at math right now. Um, for some small contributions from our ARPA funds, um for the installation of six charging stations. On the public parking lot on Maple Ave, the uh annexed building slash town hall, and also the library. Um, so it's six stations and I believe it's two ports each, um, so however many that is twelve, six times twelve. Does that never match, finance committee?
There's three, three spots.
One that's a single.
Okay, alright.
I can't remember if it's here at the library, or I think it's here at the library, there's one that's a single.
Um, so this, again, would be offset by um some national grid incentives, and then there's a state um electric vehicle charging program. Public charging stations program, um, so Tamika, if you have anything, just on details on this as well.
I don't have too much more to add to um what Austin said, but essentially, yeah, it came from um the Green Communities Grant Conversation last fall that we had. Um, and once we were awarded a grant, um, ECI, who works with National Grid, reached out to us and said. And once we were awarded to grant, um, ECI, who works with National Grid, to reach out to us and said, is this something you'd like us to investigate? They went out with Joe Buckley around town to try to find the locations that would make the most sense to install these. And as you see in your package, it was at the library, um, the Maple Ave parking lot, which is right next door to Rutland Pharmacy, and at the town, Annex Town Hall building. So, essentially, they went back and forth over quite a bit of time. We didn't hear anything for a little while, and then things started ramping up again, I'd say within the past month or so. They, ECI reached out, they submitted the applications and information on our behalf, um, and provided us back essentially, you know, we can take advantage of these opportunities, but we will have to provide, you know, that certain bit of money, um, to be able to make our, our match, so to speak, for this program. So, it's really just a, up to the board, if you feel that, you know, it's worth spending the ARPA funds on it, it would be a one-time expense for this to, to go forward. So, it's really at your discretion now, and, and then whatever you tell us is what we will go back to ECI and National Grid with.
So, if I did the math correctly, for the Annex Building, the total cost is twenty-two thousand eight, twenty-six, and twenty-five cents. The net cost to Rutland would be three thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. Um, the library, the total cost is thirty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars, and the cost to Rutland would be five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. And then the Maple Ave, which I think is, um, two, yeah, is the total cost for Maple Ave would be forty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars. The cost to Rutland would be seventeen thousand five hundred ninety-six. So, if I did my math correct, it would be total cost to Rutland for all three locations would be twenty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-eight. Does that sound correct? I think, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I know electric vehicles are becoming more and more prevalent in town, and I don't know if other communities, surrounding communities have electric chargers or not, um, as a service to, to their citizens and, and their, their, um, people who frequent their communities.
I don't know the answer to that specifically, um, but I certainly can reach out and follow up. If you guys, you know, are curious to know who around us is, is utilizing these.
We're surprised that Holden had at least one.
Yeah.
I know Worcester has several.
Yeah.
Sterling has one downtown.
Where does our?
Sterling.
Oh, Sterling.
Sterling has one downtown by the library.
Is there, um?
Are we talking about one spot or one charging station?
There's one thing where people plug in, whether it's a dual or whether it's a single, I didn't pay attention, but I know it's there.
If I may, uh, do we have a way to find out in town how many registered electric vehicles we have? I realize it would be just specific to Rutland, but.
I think so, yeah, yep, through the assistant's office.
The other consideration, I think, that's important is if, you know, I kind of push, like, Rutland is being a little bit of like an outdoor destination location for people to come, people from Worcester and surrounding communities to come for the day or whatever. And I think that in some ways, there is value to having a, a charging station. I don't know how they would, what the time constraints are, or the capacity or anything of them, but I do think it's, it's a service to not only our residents, but also, uh, other people who are frequen- frequenting our businesses.
And is it something where we would have to do all three, or we can pick and choose if we wanted to do one or all?
So, I believe that Tamika could probably answer this. I believe these are three separate proposals, so if the board opted to, you know, not pursue one of the opportunities for one of the locations, you just, I think, modify your ARPA allocation for, uh, that reduction.
Is this a pro, great, go ahead, Karen.
Karen Norwell, uh, Poma Gussett Road. The one at the Annex, so there's gonna be two of them. That means there's gonna be two parking spots that we're gonna lose.
Not necessarily. So, I've seen some communities where it's electric vehicle charging only, uh, while, or electric vehicle parking only while charging. But certainly, I think there's some town halls or some municipal complexes that have limited parking spaces. So, it, we could probably put a sign up where charging only, yeah.
The only reason I'm asking is because when the pool gets busy.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to park, and then the whole purpose of having a charging station when someone's parked there to go either to the Town Hall, the Annex, or the pool, it kinda defeats the purpose of having the charging station.
What, I mean, in that case, we may, you know, be able to, if it's full, especially during the, the busy summer, maybe put the other locations and say, hey, you're not far from the other locations, you know, go to whatever number Maple Ave it is, or go to the library, um, for additional charging opportunities. Just one way to maybe promote it. I also just wanna make a note on, uh, the management. Obviously, this would utilize, um, our utility accounts. So, one of the things that a lot of the communities realize, especially when these first rolled out, everyone wanted to make them free. They wanted to incentivize electric vehicles to come into town, but then they realized that someone's paying for it. So, we need to manage that to make sure that the fees, um, I don't think we'll be making money off of this, but we need to make sure that our costs associated with these charging ports, um, are offset by the fees associated with people charging. So, it's something that probably every year we'll have to take a look at our fee structure for this, um, to make sure that we're certainly not losing money on, on this program as well.
So, so the Maple Ave through the chat, that the Maple Ave parking lot is the, the pharmacy?
Mm-hmm, correct.
That's the town, that's town lot?
Yes.
I'm trying to think of a cir- circumstance where somebody would pull in there to charge, like it kinda, I get the library and I get the Annex, I, I don't know.
I think it's just another parking lot that if people wanna walk to Center Tree and have dinner, they can, they can charge there and go to Center Tree and have dinner, or go down to Baked, or, you know, if there's even, you know, if it's full and what, and they wanna walk across to the ball fields or something.
Or folks traveling through town and need a quick charge, like, you know, if they're filling up in town, they'll be filling up their battery in the lot somewhere.
There are people who reside in the center of town too, so, I mean, that would, you know, probably be beneficial then. Would these be expandable? In other words, you know, without having to go through the whole regimen again, would be possible to add more onto these things? Each station as necessary?
Yeah, so I, so, um, obviously, there's costs associated with buying new charging ports, things like that, and obviously extending the infrastructure, but I think one of the biggest costs is getting the infrastructure, you know, from the pole to the site. And then, once it's at the site, certainly if, if the town is willing and able, I think we could expand and we have a charging lot.
Or coordinate with the schools and/or the building on Glenwood and, you know, kind of diversify where we are.
Yeah.
I know, um, for this particular project, they were focusing just on town hall lots in the center of town.
Yeah.
But like you said, that's not to say you couldn't expand to other areas, yeah.
I mean, I personally look at it as a, a positive opportunity for, um, for the center of town. Um, I don't think that there's a lot of, um, charging opportunities outside of, until you get to Worcester, obviously Sterling, but I think that there is value to having it, um, and if we're trying to promote kind of the, the one-day tourism and agro-tourism a little bit and that kind of stuff, um, I think it provides an opportunity. I think, I don't know for sure, I think a lot of people, um, that have electric vehicles have charging stations at their homes or places of employment or something. So, I don't know for sure how many it would be everyday residents that are doing it versus employees or, or passersby's.
Question.
Yeah.
Who takes care of the maintenance after they're installed?
We do.
Okay.
Is there any sort of
It's a relative.
Certification or something that people need to be able to know how to?
Honest, well, we don't have any electricians on staff, um, other than our electrical inspector, but, um, we would likely procure those services if there was ever damage. I believe there's also probably a, um, a warranty associated with this, so if there ever it was a, an issue with one of the charging ports, we could reach out to ChargePoint, um, or the manufacturer. But they're ours. Once they're installed, they're ours.
I imagine also that some, if I may, some communities that offer these incorporate into their fee structure some sort of, of not a huge amount of buffer, but some sort of kind of maintenance repair. Um, allocation also.
Where, where we own these, we pay the electricity, so all we have available is to charge a fee for this. So, we don't get a, a residual on the electricity use coming back. We, we're not paying any cheaper rate, if you will, than what the town pays for electricity now. Okay, so.
And, and when you figure that out, don't forget the credit card fee.
Right, yeah.
That's three to five percent depending.
What, why, uh, why is Rutland Maple Ave parking lot three to four times? It's more expensive than the other ones. You're talking four thousand, this one happens to be almost eighteen.
I suspect, um, it's access to infrastructure. I mean, obviously, I think we can top off the, the electricity that's nearby, uh, at the library and the Town Hall or Annex Building. I don't think we can do that from the pharmacy, so they'd be going probably from the nearest pole. And wherever these locations are, or charging stations are located on the site, the infrastructure costs associated with that, I think, are reflective of just the different nature of the location.
Uh, I mean, I guess I could see a need for this. I almost feel like if we're putting in six of these things in a town of ten thousand people, and Holden has one, and the other one has, that's kinda a little bit of overkill for me.
I'm kinda the same mind, Harry. I, I, I think doing all three is overkill. Especially, I mean, and in the grand scheme of things, if, you know, compared with the overall cost of everything compared to Rutland's contribution, I get it, all three would only be twenty-seven thousand dollars, but we just have RDIC asking for twenty-five thousand dollars for theirs. We still have the fire brigade asking for money to repave the driveway. I don't think either one of them would be happy if we said we're gonna put in a whole bunch of electric charging stations that we don't even know how many vehicles we have in town. Are they going to get used? Lee, I understand your point about promoting, but I don't think that's gonna make or break people coming to visit if we don't have an electric charging station here. So.
Well, so the Annex is thirty-seven hundred?
Yeah.
Out of our pocket?
Yes.
Right.
So, thirty-seven hundred dollars to kinda try it out.
How long does this program last?
I mean.
As long as we, I mean, uh, as long as we decide to continue the program. If we decide after a year or so that it's not worth it, we can certainly shut it off, but.
When can we, when's the deadline for buying these things, for putting this in? Is it a year, two years under the federal grant or what?
No, so I believe, so, um, these quotes were given to us, what, a month or so ago. We had asked, um, for, uh, just a couple of weeks to be able to present this to the board for your consideration. So, I, I think that they're hoping for some sort of an answer yes or no, um, probably by the end of the year, I assume, and then because all projects change, I would assume that there may be different costs associated if we decide to kick this another year or so.
So, it does give us time to get a little more information on this thing.
Well, I mean, this is, this is what you have for information. We could certainly do a, I don't, I don't even know what that analysis would look like, because, I mean, I just looked up quickly, it's, it's Sterling, Princeton, and Berry that have charging stations. We could certainly reach out and say, how popular are those?
Curious as to how many they have.
Yeah.
For their population.
Yeah. Well, yeah, population's a challenging one, because, I mean, we have a lot of people that pass through town. I think, and we'll certainly get some numbers, but just to give you an idea, I think mastod traffic counts just for the center of town, I think I saw fifteen thousand a day. So, there's a lot of folks that pass through town, whether it's one-twenty-two, one-twenty-two A, fifty-six. So, population, I guess, isn't a true reflection on how many people would be using these charging stations either. But certainly, if the board would like to choose one of the locations or none of the locations and need some more information, just thought it would be, you know, an opportunity for you to consider and weigh the options, so.
I look at this, sorry, Harry, I look at this as an opportunity for the citizens of the town who do the charge or they're traveling. They're coming back home from Connecticut or something, and they need to stop off to charge their car. I know, cause mostly charge, from what I understand, take a half an hour to three hours to charge anyways. So, they're sitting there a long time on these things. So, it would kinda be, if you're going through town, to me, that would kinda be an emergency situation where you're gonna stop and charge, because it takes a long time to do that. But I think to do this for the residents of the town, so they know they have something there, I think is a good thing. I just don't think that we need three different locations and six of these things to do it with, so. You know, but to do something to the town, be a little progressive in, in the.
One of the things we will explore is, um, there's a lot of state incentives for municipal fleets to convert to electric, so I just wanna put it out there that, um, I'm also exploring installing charging infrastructure at some of our other, maybe not so public facilities, um, where public aren't parking, but our municipal fleet would be able to utilize charging infrastructure, so I don't think this is going away. I think.
That's the way of the future.
Yeah, and I think that there's certain, um, vehicles within our fleet that, that make sense to convert or to pilot. So, we'll definitely, I think, have other opportunities for charging infrastructure.
From, a few years ago, when we were on town center study, some of the feedback was ways to kind of create, like, what are people coming to town for? And what type of bus- businesses are here versus could continue to grow here? And providing, you know, even going to dinner, that's two hours. You go and have dinner and drinks, you can charge for two hours and, and have dinner and drinks or, or, or something, or even you wanna go to breakfast and, or brunch and plug in for a couple hours. I think it's trying to utilize that and draw as an, as an additional opportunity for people who may be coming from not within Rutland to come, oh, well, I can go and I can charge, like, oh, then if I'm gonna go somewhere else and I don't, and I can't charge, then maybe I'll preferentially go to Rutland. And it's small little things, but it's just another opportunity to.
I think that's a great idea, until I decide to drive my Tesla out for supper and I find out that somebody's already charging. Now I'm stuck.
Happens everywhere.
Right, but, so we can't accommodate fifty, sixty places in town just for somebody who wants to come through, but I do think for a sit, for our town, there's something we can do. Has anybody thought about the DPW for putting a charging station?
No, for the, the public bit to be able to access?
Yeah, I mean, it's right there on, right there on the road. You just pull in, you plug in, you go across the street to the market if you want.
Yeah.
But versus. What?
I, I'm sorry. I imagine they've probably talked about that during their discussion, and there was probably a reason why they didn't go with that.
Okay.
Which is, for, like, a thought, I'm sorry, I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, that was a kind of a fork off.
Look at some of the high-use areas, Harry.
What?
Like, I think they're looking at some of the high-use areas, like,
Okay.
like the library, obviously, we know how busy that gets. Town Hall, especially during the summer, uh, and they're looking at public lots, like the one that we own on Maple, so. But certainly, I mean, uh, especially during, during ball season, people park at the DPW as well, so. I'm sure, but as Tamika mentioned, I'm sure there's a reason why they didn't.
Right, I was just thinking of the convenience on and off versus trying to fight traffic in town and pulling in and stuff.
I also don't know that these, these aren't, I don't think the Tesla, like, high, the Tesla superchargers, so I think that these are the ones that are kind of, you know, an hour to three or four hours to fully charge, um, depending on, on the car and, and everything. So, I think it's less of, you know, the superchargers where you just kinda pull in and plug in for fifteen minutes, and it's more of, you're gonna park for an hour. If you're at the library, or you're at town doing business, or, or one of the businesses, or, or, or something versus, um, plugging in and running to the marketplace, so.
It's gonna become like parking in the city of Worcester on the streets, you're gonna charge card in the, into the slot and pay, pay through charge card. So, I mean, you know, this is obviously where it's gonna head for, but.
Can't our, um, tax collector, through the excise tax, figure out what kind of a car, how many cars are owned in town that are electrified?
Um, I'm not sure if we probably can, yes.
So, I'm hearing that maybe we're gonna pause this and get a little bit more information, specifically the number of electric vehicles in, in town?
My concern is for the town. We're doing this for the town. If somebody's coming through and they wanna use it, it's fine, but I, I'm not, I don't think the town should do a build-out for other people coming through to plug in. We're a small community, unless you're going to, uh, unless you're going out west to Route Two to see the leaves, you know, and you need a charging station, you're not gonna.
I mean, I think it sends a good message to do maybe one at the Annex, and, you know. I mean, I think it sends a good message to do maybe one at the annex and, you know, it's a. This for trying to show people, we're, you know, trying to move towards the the future and environment and everything, but. I don't think twenty seven thousand dollars, right now, we got way too many things going on.
So, yeah, can I just kind of ask, what information you would like for the next meeting to help you make your decision? I I do know you wanna know about the number of electric, electric vehicles registered in town, is there anything else that the board would be looking for so we can come prepared?
I think it would be helpful if the surrounding towns that have them, if there's a way to track how many. Times it's used, I don't know if that's something that's tracked at those units.
Yeah.
And like, track meaning like not people that are in the parking spot, not not utilizing it, but actually plugging in and charging.
And and what do they do about the cost factor, how do they balance out the cost of using it for when somebody plugs in?
Right.
Are they breaking even, are they losing? What do they do? Yeah.
Right, if there's an additional fee that we as a town decide to charge to accommodate, to, like you said, offset whatever maintenance and whatnot. How does that get?
And I guess.
Is that just?
How does it work, yeah, you know, basically, you know, how are the other towns doing it?
Certainly, people are smart with these, uh, my previous community, we did one at town hall, and the first fifteen minutes were free. And then you paid whatever it was after that, so we had this one um, individual that fifteen minutes at a time. Charge, leave, come back, charge until it's full, and then he went. Came back the next day.
You wanna hate the player, right?
I'll give him, you know, he he went to the library, utilized the services, he went to the local pizza place, so. Everyone made some money in the long run with the meals tax and everything else, but.
Acton's a very different community.
Oh, I know, but and they gamed it, they were smart.
Tamika, one question I would have is kind of the, and I didn't see it in here, the location on the lots, because we know. Especially with the parking lots being redone, um, we talked earlier about the annex lots not having space. And even the library lots, maybe not having adequate space for um, different things. So I would just be curious as to kind of the, where in the lots they were looking to go, and then also. Um, how busy those lots are, I think with the new paved lot back here, I think that that's probably the least busy. Um, but it's maybe the least central. So as far as, you know, town business and and local business, so um, that would be one of my questions, I think.
Yeah, we, are you looking to get that from the different towns?
No, for here, in in town, for these charging stations where the plan in the lots were to go. And because we know that, you know, the annex lot is often full, just with town business and to have. So if somebody's trying to charge their vehicle there but not do any town business, it's it's taking a spot. Back here, there, I think with the paved lot, there's more space, but it's a little bit less centrally located. So if they're not able to come during the library hours, it's maybe not as easy for them. Um, whereas the the Maple Ave parking lot, I know gets busy at certain times of the year or at certain times of the day. But I don't know where in the lot they're planning, planning to go, cause that's, to me in my head, the most centrally located, but it might not make the most sense.
Let's just look at the money, though, like Harry said, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars.
Right, well, I don't know if we could ask them to do one there instead of two or 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 whatever, I don't know, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I also wanna point out, it's it states in here that they're not responsible for finished landscaping or finished asphalt, lease detail if needed or permit fees. So those are additional fees that we'd have to tack on and consider.
Um, would this require a town warrant? Okay.
Yeah, I just think like everything else, we're trying to accomplish its priority, and that's just just probably isn't a priority right now.
All right.
I just wanna say, you know, fire chief was very excited about an electric engine, fire engine. With a range of ten miles or whatever.
As long as it's not raining.
Yeah.
You'll never wear the tires out, chief.
We appreciate the feedback, there's, and one of the comments I was gonna make is there's a lot of opportunities as well. Um, so whether it's ARPA funds or some other funding opportunities, I think. As a green community, we're we're always gonna be reminded of those funding opportunities for these kind of projects, so whatever comes up. Um, whether it's a, you know, electric charging station or something else, we'll. Obviously, hope to have your feedback on these, but it's definitely the way of the future, and I think as a green community, we're um. I think we're, we've already told kind of the state and demonstrated to our our neighboring communities that we're kind of a leader on that front, so. Anything related to this, I think we'll always consider.
I think going forward, one of the best things we can do for the town is to develop our own solar field. To charge the town's electricity, so we can save a couple of hundred thousand bucks a year on something like that. So to me, if solar is a big issue, that to me is something we should look into, but, you know. I don't know what the infrastructure would be like or anything like that.
So I'm, I I think I was hoping that the cost would be a little bit less, just with the different additional grant opportunities, but it is what it is right now, so. We can get that info and then we can put it on, maybe not next meeting, but for December meeting, I just know next meeting is. All right, moving into requests for interest, uh, redevelopment of town property. Austin, do you wanna take this one also?
Sure, yep, so um, it's been clear over the past several months, um, from interactions with members of the community and the board. That think there's an interest in, um, and obviously this is related to one of the board's uh, goals as well. As taking a look at our town property and finding opportunities for um, potential economic development or redevelopment opportunities. Um, had a conversation with select McGalvin, some other uh, members of the board for um, kind of also our recreational needs. So essentially what I'm asking is for uh, hopefully a high level discussion and some direction from the board. Um, for what the town could um, endeavor in a request for interest process. So this is very different from request for proposals or invitation invitation for bids. We take a look at some selected um, town owned properties and put out an RFI, a request for interest. Um, essentially seeking anyone that's out there who may be interested in um, economic development or redevelopment opportunities for um, some town owned property. Um, what would follow from that, after receiving those requests for interest and reviewing those, those would be presented to to the board. Um, if there is an interest in one of the proposals or one of the um, submissions, we would then issue a formal request for proposals. Where that's uh, following the competitive procurement process, technical scoring, analysis, things like that. And also um, an actual price associated with it. Um, so while this is, I think, was sparked from interest in recreational opportunities. And I'm just naming, for example, like a recreational complex or something like that. Um, we were kind of hoping to start this discussion from an economic development development perspective. When you draft an RFI, you can identify some overarching goals, so if it is a recreational complex, mixed use development, whatever it is. You can put that in there, so if someone's looking to come in and build, just for example, a Walmart, it wouldn't necessarily be in line with the request for interest. So they probably wouldn't sub- submit uh, in response to that. Um, so that's kind of the overarching introduction, but um, hoping to have a discussion if if, first of all, if you have any parcels in mind. That would inform this RFI, um, and then if there's any ideas as well. So if it's recreational, mixed use, whatever it is, um, just hoping to get some direction from the board to develop that RFI. Um, issue it and then report back to the board for um, what we received from for responses to that.
Will the board know what the expanse of our town property, own property is? Will will, we can see that, so we can see what we're looking at, okay? And two. What, how does EDC and RDIC fit into this in what you're trying to do?
So so the intent after this, after kind of receiving some general direction, is to develop the scope. Um, and work with each of those, especially if it's if it's RDIC and it's related to the uh, to the Heist property. I'd wanna receive especially their input as well, if they have uh, some experience or if they have some comments. Um, in drafting that scope for the RFI. Um, and then ideally, just get one kind of final blessing and review of that, um, send that out and then report back to. The select board.
Okay.
For what we received. So it'd be, it'd be, you know, kind of involving them, but ultimately. Um, the select board and me as a chief procurement officer are in charge of kind of that process. Uh, so we would be conducting that RFI process, receiving the submissions, giving sidewalks for the associated sites, things like that. Um, and then at a public meeting of the select board, the community would also have an opportunity to see those proposals as well.
I can see the benefit of that, considering how we've stalled on this for many, many years. So I can see the benefit of going through that.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to see all the town property that would be available out there for development, cause. In my years, even on the CFPC, I haven't seen any of that.
Think just when I was looking through the records, I think not, obviously not all of it is probably developable, develop, that's not a word, you know what I'm trying to say? Um, there's like almost seven hundred acres of property, um, some, um, I think are more attractive to folks who would like to develop. Some probably not so much, um, but to issue an RFI doesn't cost us anything, we're not engaging a firm. We're not engaging a real estate agency to do this for us, we're putting it out there and through our channels, um, able to communicate with those who may be interested in the industry. Uh, but also demonstrates to the public and and especially to the business community that we're serious about. Um, economic development.
Would, would that be focused through your office, Austin? Because I heard that this didn't get done because this person didn't do it, and this didn't, I didn't understand this thing, so this didn't get done. So we need a focus point.
Yeah, so we, so I'd like to involve, obviously, you, Taylor Lerner, who has a lot of um, experience in this as well. But it would ultimately, the submissions, you know, kind of would come, come to our office. We'd compile them, um, take a look at them and then present them to the board as well. And and the good thing as well, in our fight, does not tie you to anything, there's really not even any scoring or anything, and you're just taking a look what the responses were. And then if we get nothing, or if we get, you know, things that the town maybe isn't interested in from board's perspective. We don't have to do anything with it, we can say thank you for submitting and move on to the next opportunity.
So are you asking for a blessing to move forward with this?
Yes, but also feedback, and if you have parcels in mind, if you have ideas for development opportunities that we should put into that scope. Um, kind of giving me some direction for essentially what what you'd like to see in in terms of an RFI to be brought back to you.
If I may, I know um, master plan is pretty much done, it's still waiting on planning board. And master plan, a big portion of that is economic development, and there was a lot of public input opportunity for that. So I would really like to kind of, I know, I, when I talked to John the other day, I think he was hoping to have planning board. Present it, you know, approve it and then present it to us, to so that then it becomes public and everyone can see. Um, and kind of really rely on that a little bit more than maybe we have in the past. Um, because I think that, that that with, coupled with John's experience in economic development. And planning both, I think um, could really be invaluable. Um, so I'm all for it.
So we could like point to some of the things that were identified in the master plan, I understand it's still in draft form and being reviewed. I don't believe, I would be surprised if there were substantive changes to the overall document. But taking, maybe taking a look at the overarching goals that we established.
Yeah, cause.
And putting that in and making sure that folks who submit, understand those community goals and tie their responses to those as well.
And there was town center study also that was really focused on town center, which we have some property in town center, I know, but it's not only. Um, only that, and some of that talk, uh, talk about was also just kind of. How to drive people into town, not residents, but how to to generate outside of town economic development. So that we're benefiting from more than just our taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, I I've, you know, there's no secret that I'm, I want recreation, because I think it's a moneymaker. I think it's something that'll pay for itself. Um, and I like Memorial Field, right in the center of town. If it could be some type of multi-use um, field. Combine that with, we definitely need a new pool house. And and remember I took you to that that place with the gym in it?
Yep.
I I have a vision where I'd like to see not only, you know, Rutland be a destination for a lot of these leagues, cause you build it, they'll come. I mean, there's a never ending demand, I'm at these places all the time, and the stands are full constantly. But not only a snack snack shack, yep. Pool house, rec building, but also a rec building, some type of thing that the citizens can use. You know, everyone has gym membership, or people that do have gym memberships, you know, there's nothing in town, they drive. Why can't we develop a recreational building, a multi-use building? Where there can be a gym in it, so that if you're a Rutland resident, that's, as citizens, that's our gym. Something like that, and have the batting cages and stuff, I mean, I just think Memorial, that that field, if properly developed, would be perfect.
Something indoor.
You know, the basketball court, that entire hill right there, that's used for nothing right now. You know, soccer, soccer needs fields, could be a multipurpose soccer, lacrosse, field hockey and football. They all share fields now, that's just the way they do it, so yeah, I mean, that that's. I want Rutland to be a destination when it comes to these recreational programs.
Those are all individually developed things that you're talking about there, okay, so in other words, they didn't come together as one one issue. This was done, then that was done and so on and so forth. So that's where there need to be a little bit better coordination to get these things put together, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, and that's what this is, you know, we're trying to, yeah, I think it's great, I I I think it's a, I think it's a winner, long term, you know, I really do.
Well, then, I'd like to see, um, and I don't know how um, Karina feels about it, but. I I feel like they need their own space for whatever programs they do, you know, they're kind of at the mercy of. School availability, after school, they're open, I know with the summer program, the last couple of weeks of the summer, they can't do anything. Because the schools are getting ready to start the year, so they don't have the opportunity to offer care for those last couple of weeks. So just, and and plus, I mean, said my my kids participated in that program this summer and they got kicked out of the school. And the cu- with the miserable summer we had and all the rain, they were stuck in the lower level of the town hall, all of those kids. That's not a good space for them to be when there's bad weather, they need more space to be able to do.
Proper facility, you could keep it running twenty-four seven, I mean, I'm not even kidding, those things. There's just a never ending demand for space like that, so that I think, and I think it's the perfect location, I mean, parking's always an issue. But maybe we could squeeze some type of parking lot in there, I don't, I don't know, that's, you know, multi-level lot or something, I guess.
Ultimately, time, the people in the town will benefit, cause it's a moneymaker for them.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, it'll pay for itself at the, at the very least, I believe it'll pay for itself.
I look at it and say, you know, we have been burdening the citizens of this town with their real, with their real estate tax rate. That for years and years, we haven't really kind of helped them out, so I'm looking to say, if we develop some, and I know other towns that have done this. And very effectively, that they can make a lot of money for their citizens to. Now, you wanna buy a fire truck, we made a million dollars this year.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm sorry, Seth.
It's gonna be electric, too.
You'll have to charge it in Berry or Sterling.
Yeah, that's right. Um, so Memorial Field, the area surrounding Memorial Field was mentioned, is there any other?
I've heard a lot about the property on sixty-eight and that that's kind of an un- underutilized, under-realized location. Um, I know it's maybe not, it might need some site development work, I'm not one hundred percent sure. Um, but I think that that and sixty-eight is more conducive to to traffic. And so I don't know for sure, I know there's been talk of, you know, contractors lot or something, um, that could house. Equipment and and everything, not necessarily that that's what we would necessarily want, but I'm trying to think of where the locations are. And what makes sense, um, the other nice thing about that sixty-eight parcel is it's right on the hold in mind, so. It doesn't necessarily benefit the downtown and the businesses downtown, um, but as far as a through fare and everything, it it.
From a commercial standpoint, sixty-eight, if you're a commercial business, on and off, you're right there, you're not fighting traffic in town.
But it's tough, I mean, the the convenience store has has really struggled up in in North Rutland, I think Marty's just closed, right, unfortunately. And I think that they, they.
Who did, Marty's?
Yeah, and and I think they struggle, you know, I always think that that should be such a valuable spot with the um, campground. Um, campground right across the street and, you know, it's on its roof air between Holden, Rutland and Gardner and. But it's, it's tough. So for some reason, yes, we think that it's.
For that type of business, there isn't, yeah.
I mean, I think that you're looking at true commercial business.
Right.
Trucking, equipment, you know, whatever, that's what sixty-eight really should be for.
Right, an office park or something, right?
Whatever, that's the type of business. Anything else we wanna do? That should be evolved center of town or somewhere where it's local for our citizens to get to and makes it a, a destination point. They really wanna go there. You know, I, again, I don't know the land or how many acres there are. I mean, you start building a facility and you're gonna double that size because you're gonna need parking, you know, so. That whole thing comes into play better. I think we do have an opportunity to start out with some small commercial stuff on sixty-eight, without question.
So I mean, that's another thing too. I mean, I guess, um, because it doesn't tie us to anything, we can list several parcels. And see what people submit for any or re, you know, one of them or all of them. Just, you know, I, I think. Obviously recre- it sounds like recreation is a, is a priority and obviously a need. Um, I would think it may be a good opportunity to maybe draft it from a, kind of a mixed use development kind of thing. I think that's kind of the new thing for economic development and, and development companies is they look at, you know, several sources of income. Um, so whether it's recreation or, I'm not suggesting this, housing, retail. They kind of make it a, an overall destination for everyone. Um, so maybe drafting it and tailoring it to be a little bit more obviously open-ended on the business side too. We have, I think, a need for recreation, but also if you want to do recreation in something else. That's something that the town would consider, it sounds like as well, yeah.
Um, I just wanna, I think a lot of the parcels on sixty-eight are no longer available. That used to be a whole industrial, commercial corridor and I think most of it has become residential housing. I think there's a few parcels, but I don't think it's anywhere near what it used to be at one point. Um, the other consideration, and I don't think that this is town-owned property, is over at Four Corners. I think that there's a lot of available, I think it's private.
It's for sale though.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a way to engage, um, outside, you, you know, businesses that may be looking for something. And, and point them towards just that's another area that kind of has been empty for a number of years and has the opportunity. Um.
Or is that something with, you know, the, the state doing, considering changes at that intersection? That there's an opportunity to acquire that piece of property that could then be.
Possible, I mean.
Moved in and further down.
Yeah, I mean, changes to the intersection are definitely a couple of years out. Um, at this point. Um, but certainly I think those kind of arrangements that you've suggested. Uh, wouldn't be unprecedented in, in the Commonwealth. I mean, especially if there's, by having this discussion now. Um, it kind of puts it out there that the town is interested in economic development opportunities. So if that landowner hears that there's an interest, there may be an opportunity there. Obviously, we have to follow the. Property procurement channels for that, but, um, I think just by having this discussion, you're kind of telling the community that you're looking at opportunities. For all of these, whether it's recreation or just business. I, I only heard, I think, a passing reference. Is there any interest in including the Heights property on this?
On both sides of the entry road, there is open, open area there. And I'm not sure what's on the left side. I know there's, um, some sewerage line that goes through there and some other things like that. But it would at least be surface usable as far as I'm concerned. And if you wanted to do something with the right side of it or the garage side of it. Um, you know, I was at one point in time saying, well, might not be a bad idea to put a senior center over there. It would be developed and it would be very readily accessible.
I think, yeah, even if there's, um, you know, up by where they're building, the residences, you know. And the town that I grew up in, they did one of those. They put a fifty-five plus community and they built essentially commercial space. For people to, small restaurants or cafes or a bank. I would love to have another bank other than GFA come into town, so I don't have to drive a half an hour to Holden to go to the bank. You know, anything like that, but just making it almost like a little village up there.
That is definitely, um, where do you see kind of, I don't wanna use that word, but I'm gonna use it, higher density sort of developments. Um, that's, uh, you know, I think they look at that. They look at where people are, not only just the fifty-five and over community. But, you know, every day in the morning and afternoon, you have hundreds of students that may be passing by and families associated with that. You have, um, folks that are traveling through. You have a town administrator that goes to work every day. Um, so there's, but the, the point is there's traffic and they look at where people are. Um, so that I do think is an attractive business opportunity for obviously the right person, a right agency, but.
I would just, if I may.
Something to put in there, I think.
If we can engage John for sure on this, because he and I had a conversation and he was just kind of reiterating. And it came up in our discussion with our DIC a couple of weeks ago, that the value of that land may explode. Once there's additional, once there's actual houses and, and residents there. So while yes, we might be able to offload it now, if we held on to it for a year or a year and a half. We may be able to realize a lot more for that property because there's valid, uh, uh, an added value. Because there's completed homes there. I don't know for sure. It's just a consideration. The town planner.
Yeah, well, and certainly this, this is, just this RFI process will be about a month or two to allow for proper. You know, responses and ability to reach, do some outreach to, um, potential, you know, developers or companies who may be interested or individuals who may be interested. Um, and from that, it would be another several month process. So there's, I mean, this is not a, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow sort of thing. Uh, but I mean, especially if we're talking about the Heights as a part of the, um, details of that property. We certainly will be putting information about where it's nearby, obviously the harmony place development. So people have a full idea, but we also need to be, we have to, um, be upfront to all the developers about if there's any environmental impacts. You know, there's a pawn there. People should know that, um, as they're responding to these. So there's so- some work on our front that we have to put together to make sure that if people are considering these, they have. At least as close to a full picture as possible.
I believe the RDIC is under the special, I think they have special ownership. RDIC has, you're gonna have to engage them to get involved in that. It can't be, I believe they have special.
Legislation, I think, it was.
As a state special thing when that all went through, so it's not something that I don't think the board even has the say to it. I believe it's RDIC that has the say to it.
I think in some ways it is. I read the, I read the agreement.
Yeah, the special, the special, just make sure, cause you don't wanna.
It's limited.
I get it, but just make sure.
Ultimately, for all procurement, um, I don't think there's any other procurement officer in town, uh, than me. And I know that I was designated by the board as the chief procurement, so whether it's RDIC or any other board or department. That is, you know, looking to follow a procurement procedure, we would involve everyone on the input for this process. Um, and certainly, um, I understand that, um, this property has a little bit of a different sort of management, if you will. Um, but we'll have to work through that as we go through this process.
Get started on this. We'll run through the kinks. You know, we'll get, we'll get through all that stuff.
It needs to be done. We've been talking about it. I've been in town for eleven years.
It's a good first step, for sure. And again, it doesn't tie you to anything. If anything, it, you know, it kind of sees what's out there.
Right, it kind of creates opportunity.
See who's interested.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll put it out there for anybody that's listening, my dream is to have like a New England backpacker type thing down near the state park. That does like rentals and like repairs and everything, because I think that, yes, and lessons and, and all of it. So year round, I think it would take a huge social media push, um, to do it, but people used to come from all over. New England to, to New England backpacker because they knew their stuff. And we have, I think, LL Bean in Blackstone and, um, REI in Framingham right now. And so that's, you know, my million dollar, multimillion dollar dream, but if anybody's out there listening.
One, one last thing I'd also like to add is, um, especially with the town growing, um, and a lot of young families coming in. Um, any sort of more local childcare, you know, I know Holden has some, Paxton has some. And it's still tough to find. I know the recreation program does provide, you know, some before and after school care, but that's, you know, and some are, but that's for school-aged kids. Finding daycare for your non-school-aged kids is still tough.
Ken, is that because they're filled up?
Yeah, and, and I know we also have a lot of home daycares in town too. But even them, they're still.
Yeah, cause they can only take so many kids, yeah.
So many based on your license.
It's what, five or six for each licensed adult or something? It's, it's hard, it's tough.
I know there was one, um, there's a building that, down on one twenty-two that I think at one point was a daycare center. But it's been abandoned or empty for at least the majority of the time we've been here, seven, six, seven years now.
Some of the feedback I had received from, this is kind of on the privately owned pro- properties, but is that they're not, um, they're not accessible. Like handicap accessible, and so they don't meet the current requirements. So when people are looking for space to, to, they don't have, the small businesses especially, may not have the funds to be able to build something new. But they might be able to help renovate something, but they can't because it's just a barrier to entry as far as everything has to be accessible. And, and they're not, and so that's a, a consideration, absolutely.
Well, this is helpful, helpful. Um, I don't think I need any official motion. I think what you gave me is a consensus. And, uh, we'll develop a scope for the RFI and involve some of the associated boards and commissions. And then we'll come back for kind of a final review and blessing and then we'll, we'll put it out there.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
And, and I, I don't know, maybe this is too much of a stretch, but. Would there ever be a situation where we could offer the land to the state, so to speak, for a project that they have? Say the, say the, say the land on sixty-eight and, and tell them almost work out a deal where, you know, you develop your state project here. And help us in the way of money and grants and everything else in regards to maybe.
So usually those arrangements come in the form of like a, a land swap or a property swap. So if there were state-owned property that the town has an interest in. Um, and we believe that there's town-owned property that the state may have an interest in. Um, we could come to some sort of arrangement and a lot of communities have done this. Um, something we'd have to explore, uh, because I think every parcel may, may or may not have state interest. And I think we'd have to look at a lot of, you know, some of the state-owned property and see if there's something that also makes sense. Uh, one of the challenges that we're gonna ha- have with a lot of the state-owned property, for example, though, is the fact that a lot of it is included in the watershed. Um, so there, we may be limited in some of our uses for some of the state-owned properties too. But I, I don't know if we could offer property for like a grant or infrastructure or anything. I'm not sure that that's possible. It's usually a kind of a swap arrangement.
All right, um, thanks, Austin. That's helpful. Um, moving into, um, special town meeting warrants, um, we can, is, assignment of articles to board members to read at town meeting. Historically, we just kind of showed up at town meeting and went through, um, however we were sitting and it was first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and then it went back. And, um, I think in interest of providing everyone an opportunity to see in advance what they may be reading or not. Um, I don't know if anybody feels strongly as to what they read, um.
I just thought it might be a little less stressful than having to try to decide it on the fly right before the meeting, I agree.
My suggestion would be just to, you don't have to read the whole article, maybe just, um, go through and just say article one. And whoever says, you know, whoever's, whoever's interested, maybe say, I'll take that one. Um, and then the intent is to print out these motions for each of you with your names. So you'll have kind of your packet of your motions, um, on Thursday.
So.
I don't have any particulars. As far as I'm concerned, you could go down the list and start with Leah, Tom, just initial each one.
I was gonna say, are you guys okay, kind of?
Listen, I'm probably the worst reader in the room.
So do you want us to assign? So Tom, we'll give you the district agreement one. So we can, we'll sign and then we'll provide a packet to you on Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine.
The good news is that because, um, we included so much information in the warrant, including the dollar amounts. The motions are, the majority of them are just going to be, I move to approve warrant article number one as written. So it's not having to reread the whole article, so.
As printed, you're saying, you're, you're, okay.
Oh, we're not gonna have to read the, oh, okay.
There's only a couple that have to be read. Um, one of them is the stormwater one, um, and the other one is the street acceptance. And you have to leave all the rest of them.
And so, um, I think what we're looking to develop with kind of assigning is, um, I think at some point it would be nice to have. You know, maybe we do this a little bit earlier in the, in the process, because then also the kind of, each of the selectmen may have. And that's like their subject matter experts for their article that they're assigned to, um, so that gives them inability over the, you know, week or so. Before, weeks or so before town meeting, get any questions you may have to your respective article. So if it comes up at town meeting, you're the expert. Um, so Harry, if, you know, someone asks you about article one, you'll know everything as, as much as possible about it. So you kind of almost sort of act as a liaison to the article.
Yeah.
So we'll assign you. Tom, you're getting, uh, street acceptance and the most controversial.
That's it. So we wanna do that now, so I can, are you gonna?
I think they'll assign.
I'll make the executive decision. I'll surprise you. And then I'll, I will send it out before the meeting, once you have it, and then I'll have everything printed for you for that night.
Okay, great.
And we are posted to meet at six thirty. The special town meeting starts at seven. We're posted for six thirty. So we'll have like a quick, the opportunity to have a quick little brief, kind of everybody cool with what they're reading and any questions, concerns. Whatever, generally, there's not usually anything, sometimes if we don't have dollar amounts. Um, that's where we'll get like the fine, you know, the last minute dollar amount changes. But for it's special, it's, and this isn't a big spending special, so it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay.
Um, we just, I wanted to just bring up that next week on the twenty-seventh, or, um, at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh. Um, we, it's gonna be busy. We have a lot going on. So there's three public hearings scheduled. There's a notice of intent to sell chapter land, um, that I think the board received the information that's land on Ridge Road. Um, there's a, the real estate tax classification hearing. We're required every year to do this with the assessor's office. Um, to set the tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five?
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, sorry, thank you. I get all the.
It's confusing, don't worry.
Um, and then there's a liquor license request for Schultz Farm. Um, so all of that has been posted appropriately, um, and so we have that going on. Um, we, I think also will be meeting jointly with planning board to appoint a new planning board member at that meeting. Um, the planning board had a resignation, um, and the way MGL is written, it allows for a member to be jointly appointed to fill this seat. Until the next annual, the next town election, which would be until May. Um, and so it's a joint appointment, so I believe planning board this upcoming week, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Will, will hear from the in, re- interested residents in filling that seat. Um, and then we would have the opportunity to meet with them on, on, um. Monday and, and make that joint appointment. Kevin, Jarvy officially resigned. And, um, so it's filling and it, the way, when these seats are, it's the same, I, I believe even for school committee or something. It's just until the next municipal election, so it's not to fill out, finish that term of the person who resigned, but it's till the next municipal election. Um, so if anybody's interested in tuning into planning board meeting tomorrow night or watching the, um, YouTube. They, planning board's usually recorded and they will have the, their, um, kind of discussion, interview discussion. Um, tomorrow night with the interested candidates.
Are they planning to come to the twenty-seventh meeting with a recommendation on a specific?
I.
I believe that that's the intention. Um, yep, so we had put it out to the public and we received two letters of interest. Um, so the board has received it. Their intention is to discuss it tomorrow night, make a recommendation to them bring, sorry, to them bring to that joint meeting. Um, to discuss with you guys on the twenty-seventh.
sorry, to them bring to that joint meeting, um, to discuss with you guys on the twenty-seventh.
Will the, will the board have an opportunity to interview a candidate that isn't recommended? So I, it's my understanding it's a joint appointment, so I thought of having a joint meeting that it would be an opportunity for both boards to interview both candidates.
Yeah.
And collectively decide on who the member is. Um, so I just didn't know if that changed. Okay, no, it's okay. All right.
So is it possible that we can ask the candidates to come to that Monday meeting also?
Oh, of course, absolutely.
By law, it is a joint appointment. Select board and planning board.
And I was, and and if that's the case, if they can interview them, but there should be some documentation they can support the board with, that said, here's his bio, here's our recommendation, here's why we're recommending him. And then we can take a look at it. So, I mean, we can look at the interview, but ultimately, all the committees that we oversee out there, the chairman has to recommend the person to us. It's not just them. So shouldn't anybody out there, whether it's board or ever, if it's a joint through the board, they have to, I don't know. I would think they should in some way.
Can they submit that? Before the meeting, the planning board?
Yes.
Any, not just a letter of interest, but like you said, the qualifications and.
So I have, I have that information already from the two interested parties. And then, um, hopefully after tomorrow night's meeting, we have feedback from the planning board that could then be put into a document to provide to the select board. Is that what you mean, Jen?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, we can do that.
Is it? So it's a joint appointment, meaning planning board is gonna conduct whatever interviews they want tomorrow.
Yep, but they're not going to make any motions tomorrow night. This is just for their, their discussion. And then the actual appointment would be made.
At the twenty-seventh.
At the twenty-seventh meeting and would have to be a majority of the two boards combined.
How many sit on the planning board?
I'm sorry?
How many sit on the planning board?
Uh, there's four right now because of the resignation.
So it's a five member board?
The five.
It's a five member board, yep.
Okay. So that should be fair.
So then for future meetings, we have November sixteenth, which is this Thursday, we have the special fall town meeting. Uh, November twenty-seventh, which is the big meeting that we were just talking about, and then December eleventh. And my guess is that we will probably look around the holidays, because I think oftentimes we try to keep the one um, around the the holiday season kind of short, just to to do the major business. Um, and whether.
Fall's on Christmas Day this year, so.
And whether, sometimes I think we've even done it remote, like just to approve uh warrants and treasury warrants and everything, or payable. So we can, we'll figure that out.
Sure. I had scheduled or planned to have all of the license renewals for your December eleventh meeting anyways, so that would be tied up.
Thank you. Didn't we schedule another tentative bylaw meeting for December two?
Yes, I think we have a couple done.
We did. I think, I think I just, I, yeah, I forgot to put it on there, but I do have, I do have an agenda posted already for that.
Yep, December fourth.
Next Monday?
December fourth. No, December fourth for bylaws. I just forgot to add it to the list.
Just wanted to make sure. And did we, had we decided on the thirtieth also? Cause I thought, no, we were going back and forth.
We did. Yeah, I have an agenda posted for that one as well.
Okay, so we have November thirtieth and December fourth as bylaws.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't charge, I couldn't set my C I P C on the thirtieth.
And then. We beat ya. So, um, then is there any other?
Yep, one more thing for you. I I did receive this afternoon a communication from Brett Ferguson, Ferguson's office. You got it as well? Yeah, oh, yeah, the other day, yeah. Um, just wanna give an update on the home role petition for the appointed town clerk. I was reported favorably out of the municipalities committee and will now be scheduled for the first, second and third readings, so nowhere close to being law yet, but um, good news reported out of committee.
Thank you. Um, so then I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reason number three as listed, which can be read, and then um, we will adjourn from executive session, not to return to open session.
I will make a motion to enter into executive session for reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Topic sewer transportation assessment.
Second.
Not not to return to open session, adjourn from executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? We'll call Harry.
Second, I.
That's an I.
The jury. Wait, man, I.